Okay, so my next question is, you wanted me to take a roll call. Are you just talking about the Planning Commission or everyone?
Correct, just who the Planning Commissioners that are there. And I also know that Councilmember Pam Mortensen is here as a council liaison. And I know Nick and I are here from staff, and I don't believe anybody else is here from staff. So I just need to know which council members are here. Thank you.
I see Shannon Bruce is here.
Okay, but she's not the council liaison for the meeting, but that's okay.
You were asking. Okay, so I'm gonna do a roll call through all the Planning Commissions. So I'm Laura Sandholm, and we have, it's gonna take me longer tonight, Mike Kirkwood.
Yes.
Damian Young.
Present.
Peter Vickery.
Here.
Steve Livermore.
Here.
Gary Pettis.
Here.
And Gary Vars.
Yes, here.
Okay, did I miss anybody?
We also got Bob.
Yeah, I was gonna say you have Bob Raybine.
There's Bob. I did miss somebody.
There's eight of you, so I suppose Gary Vars is the first alternate will replace Justin. And then I suppose Mike, you're free to listen, I guess.
Right, when we do the roll call, Madam Chair, you won't need to ask Mike Kirkwood for his vote.
Okay.
But I mean, it's good that he's still here, but yeah, because since the Planning Commission is only a member of seven people, and we have two alternates.
Okay, but he can still participate, right?
He can. He can ask questions and such. He just, when you do the roll call vote, he's not part of that.
Okay. Okay, so I guess maybe I should have called the meeting to order before the roll call, but the meeting's called the order. And so on the agenda tonight, the first item is the approval of the agenda. This is the only item on the agenda tonight. There are no public hearings. Does anybody have any discussion, or do I hear a motion?
Madam Chairman, this is Peter Vickery. I make a motion to accept the agenda as written.
And do I have a second?
I can second that.
And that was Damian. Okay, now I need to go through the roll. So I say aye.
Would you like me to do the roll call, Madam?
I would love you to do the roll call.
Okay. Damian Young?
Uh, yea.
Just say yes or no.
Yes.
Chair Laura Sandholm?
Yes.
Peter Vickery?
Yes.
Gary Vars?
Yes.
Bob Raybine?
Yes.
Steve Livermore?
Yes.
And Gary Pettis.
Yes.
And that is to approve the agenda.
Yes. Okay, the second.
You have a...
Oh, pardon me, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, no, I was just gonna say it was approved 7-0.
Yep. And then the next item is the approval of last month's minutes. And is there any discussion or changes that need to be made to those minutes? Okay, if nobody has any changes, we need to have a motion to accept the minutes as submitted? Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the submitted Gary Vars.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second Gary Pettis.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do the, I'll do the roll call vote again if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Chair Laura Sandholm?
Um, yes.
Peter Vickery?
Yes.
Damian Young?
Yes.
Gary Vars?
Yes.
Bob Raybine?
Yes.
Steve Livermore?
Yes.
And Gary Pettis.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carried 7-0.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And moving on, we have no public hearings tonight. And really, our only order of business is this concept sketch plan. And Nick, do you wanna tell us about this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I will give a pretty brief overview of the staff report. I'm sure all of you had the time to review. And then if there's any questions of myself, I'd be happy to answer those. It also looks like we do have our applicant here who could answer questions. And it seems we've got quite an audience. I'm sure they've got some questions, comments, things of the like. We can let them speak so that the developer can understand some of the comments and concerns from people in the area. But like I said, this is just a sketch plan at that stage of the development. So it's just an introductory for the applicant to put it in front of the Parks Commission, Planning Commission, and City Council. It went before the Parks Commission on October 13th. They looked at it for park dedication. And the kind of summary of the motion or the comments that they provided to the applicant was in your staff report. Basically, it's some hybrid of, you know, looking at park dedication for land and then cash and lieu, kind of with some of the existing systems, work that in there with trails and connectivity. So that brings us to this evening, which is the Planning Commission's opportunity to review the initial proposal and provide any comments to the applicant. In your staff report, there's been some items to look at and to consider in terms of the zoning, lot configuration, grading, you know, utilities, streets in stormwater, things of the like. See, I guess this evening we'd just be looking for me to provide any sort of comments and feedback to the applicant so to better direct them with a possible future application. So I guess I'll, I'll leave it there for now. Like I said, the staff report kind of speaks for itself. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, like I said, we do have our applicant here as well, who can maybe give a little more background on the proposal and where they, the vision and where they see it going.
Well, now, in our packet, there was two items here that we were gonna discuss as to... Let me understand this right. We're gonna review the sketch plan, but we're also going to talk about the comprehensive plan amendment that would be required for this?
Correct, yeah. I think it's first and foremost looking at, obviously, a comprehensive plan amendment is required. You know, this area is not within the urban service area for utilities, and it's not zoned or guided for a residential density development. So those are the things to consider first, and I guess determine if it's something, you know, they were to make an application, if it's something you would support. And then obviously, taking a look at what they have put together and then providing comments on that is kind of the second part of that.
Okay, because we can discuss, and we're still just recommending, what do you wanna call us? Group of people?
Body.
Body, that's the word. So we, we would make our comments on the comprehensive plan, and then we would go ahead and make our comments on what we like and what we don't like about the sketch plan, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So are we going to do the sketch plan first or the comprehensive plan first?
I think it makes more sense to start with the comprehensive plan, because that obviously is first and foremost what would be required. And then obviously, the second step would be to look at the proposal as presented.
Okay. Okay, well, maybe the next step is to have the applicant just speak to this so we get more information before we start asking questions that might be answered in that. Do we want, does the applicant, you said the applicant was here?
Yes, this is Casey Wolfhager with Summergate Development.
And your address?
153 Surrey Trail, Apple Valley, Minnesota.
So what would you like us to know about this development?
Well, I mean, the biggest thing we'd like you to kind of look at is, whether you're familiar or not, one of the landowners in the project, Jen Olson, also owns a large number of acres directly north of the project. And she's in the process of working with, you know, kind of the regional park system in donating some of that land to them. And in kind of keeping with the Minatrista's kind of vision statement, what we're trying to do is create a, what we try to do is create a plan that considered as much open space and kind of intelligent planning around a giant, or not a giant, but a very large park donation that she's making, you know, to the Three Rivers System. And we tried to make sure that when we came up with our plan that it fit with the communities that are around it. The, it's using standard city streets. It's not trying to use smaller or more narrow streets, so the street system would be very similar. Like Nick kind of mentioned, that the idea would be to try to connect any of the neighboring trail systems and sidewalk systems into this neighborhood, and then hopefully, connect them directly north into the proposed land donation to a larger regional trail system and park system that can be developed over time. The plan itself, which I assume a few of you have had at least a chance to look at, it's on, I think, slide or page number 14 out of the whole package that Nick had sent out to everybody. It shows a couple of connections to the temporary cul-de-sacs that were installed when Saunders Lake was developed. If you're familiar with Saunders Lake's project off to the direct east of this site, you know, the curb and gutter were stopped about 100 feet short of the property lines so they could put in the temporary cul-de-sacs for the eventual connections to this neighborhood. If you got some feedback. But either way, we've, we've got a mixed use inside the project. A few of the homeowners are planning to, you know, stay in the parcel. Jen Olson has her home in kind of the north end of east half of the project. And Catherine Hill is retaining her home inside the project. So one of the things that we did when we designed it was trying to make sure we designed a road system that would accommodate those that wanted to stay inside the project, to stay inside the project itself, and still allow variation in home styles. There's different, some larger lots, single family, that kind of buffer some of the lots that are in Saunders Lake. And then there's an alter, kind of different sizes inside that. We've got some 65-foot wide lots that are considered actually kind of large nowadays for standard, single-family lots. And then we also have some, in the middle, we have what we call Villa lots, which are 55-foot wide lots. And the point of those kind of lots is to create, generally, they're done under an association that does maintenance of the street, or not the streets, but the driveways and the yards. So people can pay an association fee that would take care of that for them. And the target audience of that kind of product is, you know, 50-plus, where they're no longer interested in doing yard maintenance and, you know, plowing their driveway or shoveling the driveway. And they're looking for kind of a maintenance-free situation. And that's kind of what the Villa homes are. A lot of times, those are one-story homes built on either slabs, or they might have a basement if someone wants one basement for safety's sake. But the idea would be to have, again, different variations of product or ways for people to live inside the neighborhood. And then if you look kind of on the eastern and the northern, or not eastern, but northwest corner of the project, again, it's all 65-foot wide lots, which again, in 2020 are considered large lots. And those would all be spread out with the idea of trying to have the homes catered to retain as much of the woods, the existing woods that are on the property, and have them as a buffer, you know, to, and connections into the park system itself. Primarily, the goal of the project is to be done in a couple of different phases. So we're, on the plan, you can kind of see this red box that kind of covers that east half, depending on what you're looking at. And that's about, let me, I can't remember the number of total acres in Phase 1, but these parcels is about 36 acres, 35 acres. And the idea would be to build the project in two different phases. So we built Phase 1, if, you know, all the people agreed, we'd be building that sometime next year. And then the second phase would be built either the next year after that or some year after that, depending on, you know, obviously, market conditions and things like that. But the idea, again, would be making connections to 110 along the southern border, and really, setting aside all along the northern and western borders, open space and park connectivity to the future parks and stuff as they expand from a generous donation by Jen Olson into the park systems. And that's kind of it for now. I mean, I can definitely try to answer any questions people have about why or how or what's going on.
Cool. This is Peter Vickery.
Yeah, go ahead, Peter.
Oh, I just have a question. Would the donated parkland then tie in with Gale Woods Farm?
Well, I mean, Jen, Jen Olson's on the call. She knows a little bit more about her parcel and how, where the exact borders are and how it connects in. Maybe she would be better to answer that.
Do you want me to speak now?
Yes, that would be fine if you would speak, so give your name and your address.
Jen Olson, 6750 County Road 110 West. And I own the, the two, there's, I think, two parcels on that, the map. I haven't got it quite in front of me right yet. But yes, I own the 6720 and the 6750 parcels. And the red line on the top that goes, that includes Saunders Lake, I have, I own the three parcels that are above the red line from the corner all the way over to, on the angle to the Dakota Rail Trail. And the Gale Woods Farm is across the Dakota Rail Trail. I have 20, about 28 acres on the north side of the, of the, of the Dakota Rail Trail as well that the Gale Woods, the Three Rivers Park had approached me about wanting to acquire. It's like a little notch out of the corner, the south, southeast corner of the Gale Woods Farm Park. And they're in the process of getting their master plan adjusted through Metropolitan Council in order to acquire that, that they're purchasing. But the three parcels that border on this proposal are 40, 45 acres. The proposed development is 90 acres, but I'm donating 45 acres. And I'm donating it to Three Rivers Park. I had met, I had met with, I had your mayor, Lisa Whalen, was out to have her view this property. And because in part, when you redid the comprehensive plan for the next 20 years, the, I noticed I hadn't paid attention. And that part that I don't ever want to see developed, I wanted to be preserved because it's remnants of the big woods, and it's, it just is a beautiful piece of property that needs to be preserved. And it had been zoned in that last comprehensive plan for a half-acre lot. So I wanted to be sure that she understood that that should have been, that probably was a mistake, but that this was what I had in mind. But I also had Bo Carlson and Tom McDowell from the Park District, and took them on my ranger out to see it too, to see if they would be interested in. At first, I was saying I would leave it in my will to them. But then, as this developed, I hadn't anticipated that this development would be proposed this quickly after the comprehensive plan was changed. But at that point, it seemed more appropriate to donate it to them now because that piece would be landlocked from anything that I would own. And so it would be better to integrate that. And as you can see, you know, the wooded area and the slopes and so on that Casey Wolfhager just described to you don't follow these straight lines. And they have proposed in here, the preservation is as much of that as is as possible. And I, my feeling was that that should, the Three Rivers Park District has their own naturalist, and they are in more of a position both to develop the trail system through that and possibly make connection over the Dakota Rail Trail to the Gale Woods Farm, and then, and also to maintain that. Then it would be appropriate for the city to take on that kind of a challenge. They have the equipment, they have the expertise and so on. And so I felt that at 45 acres is a substantial contribution to the ambiance, if you will, and the, the value of the whole development as well. So that's, that's kind of where that stands. And I, I did, you know, I struggled with the idea of whether to stay or to leave. You know, a lot of developers will come in and, and, you know, we want the property, and you want the money, and goodbye, and then we'll do what we want. But back in the early, early 2000s, about 2006, I think it was, the developers were coming then, and I talked to my neighbors, the same owners that have these five parcels, five properties that are a part of this proposal, and said, you know, we could, we could have a, have a development here that would be coordinated and would reflect the value we see of the beauty and the topography of this land if we, if we worked together as a coalition and had a developer that had the same vision that we did. And that is what, what, they were, there was agreement then, but then the housing bubble burst, and they went away. So that was fine. I didn't have any problem with that either. But now, you know, now with the change of the comprehensive plan, and this is left as urban reserve, it was one of the parcel owners in there needed, needed to move on. And that's kind of what triggered, that triggered the development of, approaching a developer to see what could be done. And it was, that was after the comprehensive plan had already been passed and the Mussoline hadn't been extended. So those, that's why those actions are needed in order to go forward. And the decision to be made as to whether it's appropriate to start with this as a part of that urban reserve designation in the comp plan that we have now. And I, while I'm, while I have the, I know that several of you are on the phone here from the Saunders Lake addition. And I will make a confession, and that is that back in, I think it was early 2000s, when the Saunders Lake, that development went in, you didn't, they didn't, you know, the Hilk's were still living there. And so we, we did not make any protests about having a development going in next door. But I did make the suggestion, since that my open fields were there, it would seem logical that when, rather than putting a true cul-de-sac, a real cul-de-sac is a large circle, and then there are lots all the way around it. And, you know, confining it to that, it might be better if you just let the streets butt up against my property. And so it would leave that flexibility in the future to have that become, be an extension of that, of that neighborhood. And that's, that is, so if you wanna, if you wanna blame somebody or that being the way in which that was constructed, you're, you, I'm here, and you can, you can do that. But it's, I, I wanna also just make one, when you start looking at the plan, particularly the layout of the streets for this new additions as it affects the Hilk's property and my property, the, what I, what we liked about Summer, Summergate's comprehensive, or their concept plan, and working with them has been, it's been a pleasure because they, they see the beauty of this, and they have put every effort into preserving the aspects that we would want to see preserved and, and that people will enjoy coming to live in as well. But they had, if you look at it, they have a street that is going down, you know, fairly close to the east end of my, of the 16, 6720, going on to 110 there. You can see where my driveway is, the long driveway, kind of not quite in the middle of the 6750. I have a tough time getting out on the road in terms of visibility, vision, because to the east, there's kind of a hill. You have to see, there's, the cars come over that hill really fast. And, and all of a sudden, then from the west, about the same distance, there's a bend. And so I almost get whiplash if I'm gonna go get out on the driveway, out on 110 to, to go east of, to be sure that there's nobody coming from either side because I have a very, very short timeframe before I can get into that, in there and onto the road. And so I was very pleased when I saw the, the proposed street that would come up closer to that, top of that hill, which then you could definitely see to the east, and you have a much longer thing to look at to the, to the west. But the Hennepin County Engineers Report doesn't want that. And I, that's, that was, that was a concern to me. And I hope that that will be analyzed, because I'm not sure why they would object to that. Because from a safety standpoint, that is, it is, not only is it, is it good from that standpoint, but it also attracts the, it will take the traffic load from this development out on that street rather than using the Saunders Lake streets as their circulation. Or they, if you don't have an access from, on that point, then they will be going through the neighborhood. And that was not our intent. So I think I've talked enough. I hope that is helpful, and I'd be happy to send you for any questions as well.
Okay, thank you. I had a question for maybe Nick, I don't know. And maybe Peter knows, 'cause he was on the comp plan. How come this property wasn't included? Because we just did this comp plan, didn't we?
Yeah. Yeah, that's correct. Peter, go ahead if you wanna take the floor first.
No, that's fine. I don't recall why it wasn't, or I don't remember it coming up, actually, so.
Okay.
Well, I think though, in large part, when we went through the 2040 comprehensive plan in the year, along with the steering committee and then the meetings of the Planning Commission and City Council, the, what I remember is, you know, with, with the Woodland Cove neighborhood, that presents the city's growth, you know, for the next 10 years, which is essentially, I know it's a 2040 plan, but since you update it every 10 years, you know, you're really, you're trying to look forward for 20 years, but you're really focusing more on the immediate 10. And like I said, Woodland Cove presents that growth. You know, we're growing to the satisfaction, you know, of the Metropolitan Council, and didn't have to force any new units upon any landowner. Sometimes that can be a touchy subject, but, you know, we were fortunate enough where we didn't have to make any changes. The growth, like I said, for the next, you know, essentially 10 years, was there in Woodland Cove. So anything would have been more or less optional at any request of a landowner. And none of that came forward as we were going through the process. It sounds like circumstances may have changed, and that's why we're here this, you know, this evening, rather than, you know, looking at this, you know, holistically through the comprehensive planning process that we just underwent.
Okay, and I had a question too. Okay, and I had a question, too, is how does this affect the density in the comp plan?
Thank you, Laura. I have the same question.
Effect the density how, I guess, is, you know, how would, you know, in terms of future development, or, or what?
Yeah, I mean, does it meet the criteria that the, the Met Council puts on us? Is it more dense? Is it less dense? Did we have wiggle room?
Well, I think with regards, I mean, with the, the updated, you know, comprehensive plan, I think this is, it's right in the range of kind of the expectations. I think the, the lower density was like one-point-one-five to four, or something like that. But the, the zoning, you know, the, the goal of the, the urban reserve and the stage development is to kind of use the R2 as kind of your, your benchmark, if you will, or kind of the, the standard to look at. And I believe the density for the R2 is, I think, two to three and a half, if I remember correctly. So this falls well within the range, pretty much smack dab in the middle. So it's right on, right on par with, with kind of what we, what the expectations would be.
But Nick, this is Pam. Our current comp plan, we, without this proposal, we meet the current Met Council, the whole Met Council plan, correct?
Yes, you know, for, you know, when we went through the, the 2040 plan, you know, we're, we're growing at a satisfactory rate with Woodland Cove. So, you know, this would be, you know, an elective comprehensive plan amendment, not necessarily a required comprehensive plan amendment.
Right. And I think the other thing that's really important to remember with the comp plan, the water tower currently is not set up to, for the additional two-hundred-and-three homes that this, you know, all encompasses here. So that's a part that you have to think about, is the comp plan was designed around what we were, what's currently stated, not including this two-hundred-and-three additional homes.
Right. And my question was, how does, what was going to be Serenity Hills across the road, if that gets developed, how does that impact the utilities? I mean, I read that letter, and it was like, for this moment in time, but what happens if Serenity, I don't know what to call that, Serenity Hills, the old one across the road, if that's developed? Is there enough capacity? You were saying that we don't have enough tower capacity right now, is that right?
Nick, do you have an answer to that?
Well, yeah, I mean, you, it's covered in the engineers memo. You know, they did a very, you know, at this stage of the, the process, they did a very preliminary look at, you know, both the, the sanitary sewer and the water main. But if you look in their report, I mean, obviously, a further citywide, you know, evaluation will need to be conducted prior to, you know, approving the development. So initially, it, it seems things look good once that, you know, five-hundred-thousand gallon tank is online. But, you know, remember that, that just started construction. So there is some time, you know, yet for that is, is ready to go in online. But obviously, the engineers are saying, you know, they're going to need a more detailed study, which would come with, you know, a, you know, future application. But I mean, it seems, like I said, that initially, things seem to be acceptable or satisfactory.
So, so here's, here's my question, and I, it's, I guess it's kind of rhetorical, but I'll ask it anyway, is that if this is approved, and it, there's the possibility that other people that are within the comp plan would have, possibly could not expand because we would not have enough water or power or sewer system for them?
Well, again, I'm not an engineer, so I don't.
But, I mean, would that be a correct statement?
I don't think we have all the information to make that statement. Like I said, the, the engineers are saying they need a, you know, a more comprehensive study. And obviously, you know, if things progress and, and get serious, you know, that, that research would be done, and it would be handled by, by the engineering department.
Right, but my question, I still.
I have one more question, if I could, yeah, if I could, Paul. Would we then, as a city entertaining, saying that that engineering study should be paid for by the developer, since they're requesting something outside of what the present comp plan is?
Yeah, I believe that would, would be the case. You know, they would be making the request, and the study would be in association with their, their land use request, and, and it's, you know, the city's policy that the applicants, you know, cover the, the consulting engineer and, you know, consulting attorney if needed, time involved in the application.
Okay, thank you.
Nick, I got a question. With the current environment of COVID, this in, in 2020, that's thrown a lot of things off. How has that affected the new homes that we were expecting from like Woodland Cove and the other subdivisions that we have in the, in the plan? I know we were tracking close to anywhere from eighty to a hundred homes. Are we on that same track? Or are we, you know, what's our number right now for this year to date?
So surprisingly, things have been, been pretty busy, you know, with people being at home, they've had more time to think and plan, you know, take the time to make the investments in their properties, and also, you know, build new. With the rates where they are, I think that's another driving force. I would say our, our permit, you know, year-to-date is, is on par with, with what we've seen the past year or two. Actually just ran a report today and focused specifically on new houses. And yeah, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred-and-twenty-four permits have came through the city for new houses alone, that, you know, not all have been, you know, completed or, or even sent out the door. But, you know, we're right in the hundred-and-twenty-ish range, and I mean, we've still got a couple of months left in, in 2020. So I would say things, things have kept, if not exceeded, expectations in certain areas.
Now, do we know how many, or are any of those permits kind of more geared to that fifty-five plus? I think that they did say something about there'd be dedicated fifty-five plus, like a portion of this. Do we, do we have any idea which ones dedicated, any of those dedicated to that kind of community?
Well, as, as far as I can tell, and I guess the, the applicant can chime in if, if needed, but I think they were, you know, referencing the, the villa-style product as being more geared towards, you know, fifty-plus. You know, it wouldn't necessarily mean it has to be sold to an individual or a family of, you know, fifty-five plus, or fifty-plus. It's just that style of house, you know, lends itself more to that, that demographic. And in Woodland Cove, there is that, you know, similar product, that slab-on-grade villa-style home. In, in most cases, one level living, some cases there is a, a second level, but not all cases. There's also some townhome-style units, but I don't know if I would go as to say those were geared towards a fifty, fifty-five plus. I mean, because they are, you know, three-level above grade, so there are stairs and there is no elevator. So, you know, there, there is a variety of, of housing down in, in Woodland Cove, in the range of what the developer's proposing this evening.
So how fast is Woodland Cove filling up at this rate?
Um, yeah, I guess I don't have any hard numbers, but I mean, it, it's definitely, I think, meeting or potentially even exceeding kind of the expectations for build-out. You know, there, there are definitely, some of their newer phases, the, the villa-style houses, those sell, seem to be selling pretty well, as is the other single family. The townhomes has been a, a hot commodity there as well. But I don't, I guess, have quantifiable numbers off the top of my head. But I mean, I would say they're probably meeting, if not exceeding, their expectations as well as for what they're selling.
So is that like, it'll be full in two years, or five years, or ten years?
I guess, when you say full, do you mean what, because I mean, obviously, not all the lots have been final plat approved. But, you know, I mean, I would say they're, they're moving at a, at a pretty rapid pace of what has been final plat approved. I mean, obviously, there's still, you know, several hundred, I think, units left to be final plat approved. So it's tough to say, you know, with those not even being, you know, shovel-ready to, to build, you know, it's tough to say when those will get built out. But the rest of it, like I said, is moving, moving at a, at a pretty steady pace. And I would say, yeah, it's, you know, in the, in the years, probably, you know, what we would be seeing for a completion of some of what they've got done.
Okay. Does any of the other commissioners have questions?
Yeah, this is Steve Livermore. I have a question for Nick. Nick, does this blend of housing match up with what you would expect in the size of a, a development for what we need for any sort of, or any sort of regulations put on by the Met Council?
You know, it, it seems, you know, I guess this is more of an opinion. I mean, it seems relatively consistent with, with what we're seeing. You know, I mean, you look at some of the development, and Woodland Cove is my, my best comparison. You know, I would say this is, is relatively on par with that. I mean, obviously, Woodland Cove was a, you know, five-hundred-acre development, thousand-seventy-one units. I mean, it's, you know, kind of a, feels like a, a city in and of itself, you know. So it, it's kind of tough to compare that too much to, you know, other neighborhoods. I mean, obviously, you're looking at, you know, what, what Saunders is, lot sizes there, the density that they were proposed. You know, I'd have to, to look at that. I mean, that's, you know, early, late nineties, early two thousands, when that went in. So I guess I'd have to look to compare those two apples to apples. But I guess comparing it to Woodland Cove, it, it seems, you know, pretty consistent. The density is, I think, right in line with what the, the Met Council would like to see. So I don't see any issues from, from that standpoint.
It does seem a little out, I mean, when, I haven't been in Saunders Lake a lot, but when I go through there, it seems like it's more of a consistent, consistent layout of homes, and this seems to be a little bit of a mix. But they, it seems like they did a decent job of trying to transition, that is, would be my only statement, right? Is it Saunders more, more a consistent style and feel of home?
I mean, they're pretty uniform, yes, I would say, in terms of, of lot sizes. Obviously, the, the ones that back up to Saunders Lake itself tend to be a little bit larger. But, you know, in terms of house product, house size, I think the, the neighborhood, from my experience, is pretty uniform.
And, and is the sixty-five and fifty-five with lots, is that consistent with what we've done in, in Woodland Cove?
In Woodland Cove, I would say, yes, it's, it's fairly consistent. I mean, they've got some that are even down, I want to say maybe even forty feet wide down in Woodland Cove. But obviously, yeah, the, the size of the lots that they are proposing isn't necessarily consistent with the, the R1 or the R2 density of zoning, hence some, you know, alluding a little bit to, you know, planned unit development considerations here. I mean, I think the developers even mentioned that in some of the materials they provided.
Yeah, it seemed like they have to go that way if they're going to reach their, their setbacks in their, in their lot with, so. Thank you, Nick.
I have a question, too. Is there, Nick, is there a reason to connect it with the Saunders Lake development? Do, do they have to have those connections for fire or safety reasons?
Um, you know, obviously, having connectivity is a huge boon for the, you know, public services, whether it's, you know, fire, police, hospital, ambulances, things like that. And I mean, you could kind of see with the way the development was laid out, it, it would certainly seem the intent was to continue it on. I mean, obviously, as you'll see in the county's letter, and to a certain extent in the city engineers memo, the, the connections is, you know, seen as a positive. It helps to alleviate some of the traffic on one-ten. You know, because obviously, they've even mentioned the idea of losing the easternmost access to the development. So that's something that the developer has taken into consideration, you know, being that it's County Road one-ten west, the, you know, a permit would have to be approved through the county. So, you know, I would look to them a little bit more for their spacing guidelines and whether or not there's any flexibility there. But obviously, you know, I, I would say the, the connectivity is, is generally seen as a, as a positive.
Okay, thank you, Nick.
Any other questions?
Well, I have one, one further question, Madam Chairperson. On, how, how big an issue is it moving the, the service line, the Musoline, or Musoline, I guess?
Well, I mean, it, it would go hand in hand with the, you know, the comprehensive plan amendment. So I mean, it would be working with the Metropolitan Council to, to determine if what they're proposing is, is acceptable, and something that they're also willing to, to look at. I personally haven't went through that process, so I don't have any firsthand experience with how that process might play out. But, you know, it's something, you know, we would have to just, you know, go through, you know, with that comprehensive plan amendment, you know, work with the Metropolitan Council and, and see what, what their thoughts are.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, you know, looking at this, and my, I guess my next question is, and I know this is going to be hard to give an answer here, but what's the possibility of somebody else a year from now, or six months from now, if this goes through, wanting us to do the comprehensive plan, move again, and move it out to encompass their building site? I mean, are we going to set a precedent, that we're going to keep extending this for ten years, and each time have to go back and do it over and over again?
Well, I mean, obviously, the, the range would be for the next ten years, because then the city would take a holistic look at its overall comprehensive plan. Obviously, you know, when you extend the utility line and make it closer to people's property, that's always a possibility. I think in this specific case, you know, looking at the Dakota Rail Trail, I mean, that is a pretty, you know, strong line of, you know, where extending past it might prove even more challenging. But I mean, I think you, you know, the, the planning commission, city council would look at it on a case-by-case basis. I don't think you can fear of necessarily setting a, a precedent on something like this, because, you know, in theory, every one should be looked at, you know, on its own merits and, and individually. But, you know, obviously, you're, the, the possibility of the request being made increases, you know, when the utilities get closer.
Yeah, and, yeah, there are probably some, some other issues along with that, too, but we'll save those for later.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments?
Are we open to public questions? Is that what's coming?
Well, I was, I had some more questions, but I didn't want to hawk the whole, so I kind of wanted to ask a poll and.
I just want to stick my two cents in, if I can. This is Paul Ruthier.
Okay, a short comment.
Short comment, real short, because, and we're from the South Saunders Lake Drive. We have two kids here.
Can you state your name and address as well, please?
Sure. It's Paul Ruthier. I'm at sixty-six twenty South Saunders Lake Drive, Minutrista. Did you hear me? Or did I lose you?
Oh, you're good.
Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Oh, okay. I had no feedback. So this new development's going to, you know, bring in two-hundred more houses. We've got the other development that's bringing in a thousand. Right now, we've got the, the school system and mound is what's holding all of that kind of together. And we have no business center for Minutrista, as I see it. And I just moved here probably two years ago. I'm just, and I, I don't understand your comprehensive plan I'm just, and I I don't understand your comprehensive plan as per se, but how is that all encompassing from the standpoint of, you know, building a business center from Minatrista to to gain some of the revenue from business? And 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 support from an infrastructure standpoint, fire, police, school systems, all of that, what what's involved in that plan to, you know, to accommodate all that? And it not going to St. Boniface and mound, honestly?
Nick or Peter?
Well, I can generally, you know.
Yeah, if you want to go ahead, Peter, I can maybe fill in the gaps if needed.
Okay, I'm sure it will be. Well, first off, you're right, St. Boniface and and mound do have commercial and mound in particular. And so it it has been very difficult to bring any kind of business or retail to Minatrista. But in this comprehensive plan, we opened up the idea of doing that along the Highway 7 corridor, which contains a lot of traffic, of course, a lot of volume there, and is contiguous with St. Boniface. So that was the idea of developing for business there. But of course, Minatrista is quite rural in parts and in other parts, it's quite broken up with hobby farms and things like that. So it's, you know, it doesn't lend itself to big centers or or things, things like that. In in the plan, we, you know, we weren't really, we didn't really want that, you know, we want to to keep that rural feel as much as we can. So I hope that gives you kind of an overview.
Okay. I had a question in regards to and I'm going to take public comment after the planning commission gets done with their questions and stuff. So then, if every anybody wants to speak, we'll we'll have you speak as soon as we've asked our questions. My question was about traffic studies and stuff. And when you put a development here, my first, because I live off 92 and I drive by the 110 92 intersection. You know, how is it going to be impacted? You know, maybe not a lot of people drive that way. Maybe they do, but that's already kind of a problem space. And I know one of the letters that was sent, I think there was a question about 110 and 44. Will those things be considered? I mean, that would have been considered in the comp plan, right?
Yeah, traffic is definitely, you know, a component of the comprehensive plan. And I think the county even brought up the idea of, you know, considering a a traffic study for the area. I'd have to look at, you know, the city code and if or when it's required for a traffic study, what maybe the thresholds are there. But we'd also, you know, lean a little bit on the city engineering staff to kind of help, you know, assist with with some of that that review as well.
Okay, so we really don't know at this time, because it wasn't part of the comp plan, how it's going to impact traffic.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, the the traffic information provided in the comprehensive plan, I don't know that it would have taken this area into too much consideration because it wasn't expected that, you know, a development would be proposed before, you know, I guess, the next review in the year 2030.
Okay.
I guess my question would be kind of going back to the schools. Does the plan that we submitted to the Met Council, does that consider? Or do we work with mound and and or the school district and kind of seeing if they can handle, you know, X amount of new homes and how that would affect the school district in West Tonka?
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, I guess I'd have to to look into that a little bit more to see what the collaboration with the school district. I mean, what collaboration is required or necessitated? I guess I don't have a good answer for that question right now.
I know that they're facing their own challenges there at the school, you know, and and I would assume that we should probably kind of think about that.
But this is Steve Livermore. But Nick, I mean, bringing this on would, I mean, we wouldn't, would you expect to see a spike in new homes? The year that this goes in or were those new homes that were maybe slated for for the other development, would those then slide over to this development? I mean, would you, would we see, would you expect to see this as net new homes on top of what our current expectations are?
I mean, I guess you'd almost you'd almost have to consider it as as new. I guess I don't know how it may compete with you know, other developments within the city of Minatrista. You know, I don't know if they would, you know, you know, take away from one another in terms of of units or if they would, you know, I mean, they are in proximity, you know, a little bit ways away, you know, got one serviced off of, you know, Kings Point Road and and Highway 7 and one off of 110. So you know, you could find some people with, you know, personal preference of wanting to live in one area versus the other. So it's really tough to say, you know, at this time.
Right, understood.
How one could compete with one another.
Right, right. Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out in my head, right, much to Damian's point, right? I mean, they're they're expecting some growth within our community, right? And so if we bring in, we're adding in, we're extending the Musa line, and then that potentially allows us to 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 gain more homes than we had anticipated, then that does put some stress on on some of the other components within our within our town or within the city that maybe not have been forecasted or foreseen. So.
The other question I have is about fire. Since we contract out with fire, I mean, are we consulting with mound on on how that would affect the coverage?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, in the past, you know, we have, you know, sent, you know, plats to the the fire department, to the fire chief to get some, you know, preliminary feedback in terms of, you know, road connectivity, you know, service areas, things like that. At this stage of the process, that that has not yet been done.
Anybody else in the planning commission?
Just one more.
And I go, oh, I just had one more point to make about the utilities in Serenity Hills. I'll call it Serenity Hills since that was the last. I mean, is when the engineer looked at this, did he did he look at it with the idea that Serenity Hills was also built? Or was he just saying, well, Serenity Hills isn't built, so this one would be okay?
I guess I I don't have the the answer to that question. I did not specifically ask the engineers what they were considering. It's quite possible that since the development is not constructed or, you know, under construction, that it it potentially was not under consideration. You ought to remember that still is awaiting, you know, final, final approval from the city of Minatrista. So it's it's tough to say.
One more question. Seeing how we really struggled last time to find land to build a water tower, if this were to move forward, could we have the foresight to get either a donation or when a water study is done, you know, with this potential development and surrounding development and how? I mean, we've got some serious water issues in in Minatrista. So I mean, again, you know, we probably should, you know, try to consider, you know, how that would affect our ability to acquire land. And I mean, I think we would need to think about that if we're really truly considering, you know, if the council is to consider approving this down the road. So just a thought.
Okay, um, we're supposed to be kind of splitting this into two questions, the comp plan first and then the actual, what do we call this, the sketch plan? Have we asked enough questions from the planning commission on the comp plan? Can I get some public input on the comp plan? What is it, rezoning? Is that okay, commissioners? You've asked your questions?
I'm okay.
Okay, is there anyone here? And state state your name and your address if you wish to speak on this subject. This isn't a public hearing, but we'd just like to hear your thoughts.
Hold on, Laura. Hold on one second here. I've got a a fair list of the names. I think maybe to to do this in an orderly fashion, I just go down the line and and call them out and give them the opportunity. You know, that way, we don't have a free for all and everyone talking over one another. So I think what I'll do is I'll just go down the list of attendees and then I'll get into, looks like we had a couple of unnamed callers, and I guess we'll just go on the list. And if you care to speak, you know, take two, three minutes, pose any questions, comments, things you might have. If you wish not to speak, feel free to say that as well. But I'll start, I've got an attendee just with the initial B. Start with you if you want to comment. The floor is yours.
You're on mute.
I'm not hearing anything, so I'll I'll move on to the next individual. Looks like we've got a Brendan Roth. Would you care to comment at all?
Hi, this is Brendan Roth, South Saunders, 6590 South Saunders. I think I'm also B here. I'm on the phone and watching on the online. I'm curious about the timing of this whole project and this is the very first meeting on it. If everything's getting approved and moving forward, what this is all new to me. So I'm just curious what the process looks and when everything happens and when more involvement and say can come from the community and if you can shed a light on that, that'd be great.
Nick, you want to tell them the process that the city goes through on these?
Yes, I can kind of give a, you know, brief overview of the, you know, the city's timeline of like when, you know, the application move through the process. It's up to, you know, the developer then can maybe speak to their personal timeline. But obviously, you know, this first step here is the the concept sketch plan. It's, you know, introductory, you know, kind of non binding feedback from, you know, Parks Commission, Planning Commission, City Council to kind of direct the applicant on a on a future application submittal. In this case, you know, we'd be looking at a comprehensive plan amendment, which you heard that discussed quite a bit this this evening, because the comprehensive plan will, you know, present the opportunity for the the developability of the property. So that's step number one, because you have to, you know, reguide it to a residential land use designation and then a residential zoning district. So that'd be the first step. And that's something that would go through the planning commission and through the city council. There is a public hearing at the planning commission level. So you would be notified, I believe, with a comprehensive plan amendment. It's within 500 feet of the properties in question. So a direct mailer would be sent out to those individuals. There'd also be a notice published in the the city newspaper, which is the the Laker. And obviously, if you don't get the direct mailer, that doesn't mean you can't comment. It just means that, you know, you'll have to discuss with your neighbors the process. It'll all be, you know, outlined on the website, too, of how you can get involved with that public meeting. Like I said, it's open to anyone in the public. So that'd be the first step. And then we would look at a preliminary plat application. And that would follow the same process as the sketch plan, except with the there is a public hearing for a preliminary plat. So again, the notice is sent out and it would depend on the request of the applicant. I believe if they use conventional zoning, the the subdivision is 500 feet. But if they rezone to a planned unit development, I believe it's 1,000 feet on the notice. So again, same process. It's it's open to the public. Anyone can comment. Anyone could participate in that meeting. And there's also a, you know, a neighborhood meeting that the developer would be responsible to hold at a time and a place of their choosing to open it up to probably that same range, you know, either 500 or 1,000 feet to get some some comments and some feedback of the 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 general public in the neighborhood. And that likely, you know, the expectation would be that happened even before the preliminary plat. But yes, the project then continues to move forward. It would be a a final plat application. At that point, it is only reviewed by the city council, because if it if it is consistent with the preliminary plat that has been presented beforehand and there there are no, you know, significant changes to it, it gets presented to the city council for final approval. I mean, that process could in theory take, you know, several months. So it's not something that would instantly happen. But again, it's also going to depend on the the developer's timeline, you know, when they submit the requisite applications, you know, we can only process them once they're submitted to us. Laura, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
And Nick, how long does it take for the Met Council to approve any changes we would make to the comp plan?
Um, I think it depends on, you know, how they quantify the amendment. I think on minor changes, I think they're sitting around 15 business days, so give or take three weeks on on that type of review. Something like this, I I don't know if it's if there's a next step up. I'm not 100% familiar with their process. But I mean, you could be looking at a minimum of the three weeks, if not actually longer, depending on how they they classify this amendment.
Okay, you want to keep going. Did you have any more comments before we move on, sir?
No, thank you for your time.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for being interested. And Nick, next person?
Yep, it looks like we've got a Chris Carlson. Care to comment at all? Chris Carlson, are you there? Care to comment?
She's on mute if she's or he. Okay. Next.
I think it, yep, so I'm hearing nothing there. Looks like I'll move down to an Eric C. Eric C, do you wish to comment or pose any questions at this time?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Thanks for answering.
All right, thank you. Looks like next is Jeanette Sheeran.
Hi, this is Jeanette Sheeran. I'm at 6685 Walnut Drive, Minatrista. I just, I guess I'm concerned with a couple of things. I don't know why they would have to run through ours, our development. If they couldn't just make those cul-de-sacs at the end rather than that. I'm concerned also with, like Damian said, the water pressure here is mediocre at best. So to add on to our systems doesn't seem feasible for us. But again, I know this is in the early plans, but I just feel that if they extend that through, that road through, we're going to talk like a racetrack here. And we're a very quiet development, so it would it wouldn't be good. And we have a lot of kids in this area, too. So just food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Nick?
All right. Next, we've got a Jen Salvati. Would you like to comment or ask any questions?
Yes, I would. Thank you. A few things, I guess. Again,
Pardon me, before you go too far, you got to give your address also, please.
2880 Basswood Drive.
Thank you.
I'm on the corner of Basswood and Walnut. So definitely there is concern about traffic, as Jeanette just said. Going, you know, I'm on a corner which would then now be too, you know, which is into a cul-de-sac right now, which is quiet. This entire neighborhood. Um, this entire neighborhood, my, my kids are young, this entire neighborhood is filled with kids. Um, and the other piece is, you know, connecting the two, these two neighborhoods, um, you know, we're, we're 20 years old with custom homes, uh, half acre lots on average. When I look at this, there's, it's two of our lots that would butt up to four of the larger lots. Um, the density is significant to be coming through an established neighborhood. Uh, and I don't see or hear anything that's similar in the neighborhood that we're trying to adjoin. Um, Jen Olson made a great point about traffic up on one-ten as well and, and not being able to see. And so obviously there is a significant issue with traffic as well. And as Jeanette just stated, our water pressure is mediocre at best, certainly. So I think water is definitely going to be another issue. Um, I know that Shirley Hills is pretty close to if not at capacity right now. So Nick, you know, you said you hadn't checked with the schools. Um, certainly something to talk about there. And I guess I just want to finish with your, you know, your mission statement is the city of Minutrista will deliver quality services in a cost-effective and innovative, innovative manner and provide opportunities for a high quality of life while protecting natural resources and maintaining a rural character. This does not to me sound anything, anything like the reason that I moved to this community. If, you know, I moved here from St. Paul, six, we've lived here, we built our house, we've been here 16 years. I could have moved to Eden Prairie, um, if this is what I was looking for. So I'm hoping that we can work together to, to make, you know, I, I understand that ultimately the land will get developed. But to do something that makes sense and keep the density someplace where it makes sense. I don't, you know, especially since we don't have to move, move a Musa line right now. Um, and also keeping, you know, keeping our neighborhood separate, I think is probably something that will be very important to most residents in South Saunders.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, looks like next we've got, uh, John Hoag. Hope I said that right?
Good evening, John Hoag, sixty-four, seventy-five South Saunders. Um, thank you for your time. Um, a couple, couple points first, maybe recalling back to a question Mr. Vickery asked Nick. And that was regarding the connection. I know a couple of people have spoken to the traffic pattern. Um, just Nick, as you explained, you felt it would be a boon for the public services and I fully understand that. Um, at the same time, if you look at it just visually, my, my suspicion would be if you were to develop the 220 plus lots there, majority of that traffic would travel east on County Road 10 as opposed to traffic traveling west on County Road one-ten daily. And to the points made by a couple of residents of South Saunders, I, I actually live way over in a northeast corner of Saunders, where it's a cul-de-sac, wouldn't be directly impacted. But I have tremendous empathy for anyone who would be on Walnut or South Saunders on either towards Bassford or over to South Saunders. Because if you look at the map, all the outflow, especially if they take the exit out at the southeast corner of this newly development, everyone, it's going to be a boon for everyone, including that owner of the property in the very far northwest corner of this, to cut through Saunders Lake to get to one-ten. That's just as obvious as can be. So if anything, I would consider, right, encourage the group to consider leaving the cul-de-sacs in South Saunders as is and making the exit, if necessary, the southeast corner on one-ten as drawn. Um, secondly, um, this point somebody raised about a master plan. If we now change it for this one, what happens when the next five proposals come up? I do think that's an issue that the committee really needs to look hard at and ask themselves, well, you know, what was our intent with the last one and why wasn't this considered? And if we missed it there, how many more are we going to miss? Um, lastly, just a quick curiosity question, the infiltration ponds. Um, I probably should notice that is that just natural runoff into those ponds? Or are the sewer systems for the new development flowing through them and then ultimately somewhere else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I guess to your last, uh, question, then obviously at this stage in the game, they have not, um, submitted a stormwater plan or any stormwater calculations. And that typically comes with a preliminary plat application. But I guess, again, I, I am not an engineer. Um, but I, I have seen where, um, storm sewer systems will be directed to, um, the stormwater ponds that are on site. So that is certainly a possibility that the, the storm drains, um, that you see in the streets, um, could make their way to those ponds. It's entirely possible. All right, um, we'll move on here. Um, I got a Ken Chrysler, I believe, or Chrysler?
Yeah, Ken Chrysler.
Chrysler, sorry.
Yeah, six, six, nine, zero South Saunders Lake Drive. I am, uh, actually at the, uh, the end of the, one of the cul-de-sacs there, so I have bought the, the field directly. So I'll be directly impacted by this, um, this proposal. And of course, my, my same concerns that others have voiced will be certainly the extension of the, the cul-de-sac or the road into that neighborhood. Uh, in my opinion, would dramatically, um, you know, affect our neighborhood. And we have, in, in my opinion, our neighborhood in the proposed neighborhood are going to be two totally different, uh, styles. We are, as Jen Salvati had mentioned, we are an established neighborhood. Um, our lots are bigger, we have established trees. Um, and then all of a sudden they have this, um, you know, 200 homes right next to us. Um, seems like quite a, quite an abrupt transition. Uh, I won't even say that transition, just, you know, all of a sudden it's there. Um, so I would have a concern not only with the traffic pattern, uh, I would also have a concern with, um, having some type of buffer or visual, um, uh, some sort of demarcation, I guess, from one neighborhood to the other, if, if indeed that, that the cul-de-sacs, you know, had to be extended. Um, you know, we personally would like to see some type of concession from the, the builder of, um, you know, offering some type of, uh, you know, blockade or trees, berms, what have you, something. So we don't have to necessarily see that neighborhood. I'm also very concerned about the density of housing that you're talking about. Um, you know, to go off of what the, the Minutrista, um, mission statement is, is I don't see any rule whatsoever about this development. Um, it seems to be more of a Maple Grove Eden Prairie than it seems to be a, a Minutrista. Um, so just from a feel standpoint, that's the main concern that I would have. Not to mention, of course, um, concern about potential property values of, you know, my property on not being as worth as much because of the, you know, the neighborhood and the traffic's, uh, pattern next to me. So, you know, those are the things that we're, we're thinking about, um, as we are, are listening. We're fully aware that, you know, this thing was going to be developed. We, we realize that, uh, to the extent, uh, in the density that we're talking about, um, that was not in our wildest dreams would, would it be to that, to that extent? So that's where we stand. Uh, I don't really necessarily have any questions. I'm assuming these houses aren't really custom homes and maybe, um, a selection of a few options. And again, that's where our, I think our neighborhoods are a little bit different. So those are the, the concerns that I would have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, I will move on now. Um, so we've got some initials here, LBP.
Could, this is Jen, Jen Olson. Could I, uh, comment, uh, again, just briefly, uh, with some of the comments that have been made?
Well, can we wait till the end of all their comments? And then if you kind of jot it down, then you can reply to their comments.
Yeah, I thought they were finished. I thought they were finished.
I'm only about maybe halfway done.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, well, I, I just, I, I, I just, I, I wholeheartedly agree that if that takes, if that parcel or if that roadway is taken out as for the county, um, the phase one only includes my property and the Hill property, we would have no way out other than to come through that neighborhood. And I do not think that that is appropriate. So I would, that, that needs to be dealt with. I also, can, can you answer the question about the water?
Can we wait till the end? Pardon me, Jen, can we wait till the end and then you can answer everybody's? I don't want to go back and forth too much.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was just, I just had a question as to where the water was coming from, uh, to, to this development.
Okay, Nick.
Um, I believe there's water services in both Walnut Drive, um, in South Saunders Lake Drive. Um, that could be extended. Um, I'd have to double check, but I'm sure there's also some in County Road one-ten West.
Okay, let's keep going down.
All right, yeah, back to, um, I got the initials LBP, um, care to comment? Anything? Uh, I see you went unmuted. I, I guess I didn't hear anything. All right, I guess we'll continue to move on here. Um, Paul, Ruthie, you already spoke. Did you want to add a couple more points or anything?
Yeah, just, just real quick, um, number one, uh, thank you Damian for expanding on my question about the schools. Um, the, the thing I want to, I want to bring out, and like I said, I just moved here four years ago. Um, we did move into a small neighborhood in a small town with a small school for a very specific reason. You're adding 200 homes in a very dense population. If I can put this to a word symmetry, all of the developments in this area have a certain symmetry. They're all equal in size and scope. And we want to maintain that because that's what people are looking for who come here. And I, I want you to think about that as we're looking at that. I have no issues with the development going in. Um, I have no issues with the developer. I just want to make sure that we maintain the small town symmetry that we have here. Because I came moved here from Plymouth with a super school of 5,000 students. And I didn't want my kids in that. So I, I don't want to see Minutrista go that route. Uh, the last thing is a question is as we build this plan or this amendment to the plan, will the, um, the contacts with the school and the infrastructure be part of that plan? Will we be able to read the results of your querying with those, um, entities in the plan and how they're going to deal with the additional load in the infrastructure?
Yeah, I guess I'd have to confirm when the, um, the adjoining, um, comments would be, uh, solicited. Um, but I mean, it would, it would certainly make sense to, to do it at the comprehensive plan level. Um, and yeah, anything that is done, it would be included with the comprehensive, um, plan amendment. And, you know, that would be held at a public meeting and you'd certainly be, you know, potentially invited if you're close enough. Otherwise, you know, you could certainly be following, participating.
Okay, all right, excellent. Look, go ahead.
Nick, there, there must be some feedback because there's.
I think it was, it was Paul.
Okay.
It was Paul's phone.
All right. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Nick. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
All right, next I've got a, uh, Robert Meyer.
Hi, this is Robert Meyer. I'm at sixty-six, forty-five South Saunders. How are you?
Hello?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, um, I think all those who spoke before me brought up good points, so I won't repeat them. Um, yeah, just the through streets, the traffic polygon to one-ten. Um, the vision of having the rural Minutrista community kind of aligning more with Orano and Independence and not so much with your, you know, Anoka's and your Plymouths and your Apple Valleys, the dense populations where we moved out here again, kind of to reiterate the rural community, the small schools and so forth. Um, so I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to reiterate that everyone before me had good points and I agree with that. Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks for your comments. Okay, Nick?
All right, um, Shannon, did you want to, Shannon Bruce, did you want to comment or make any points?
Uh, no, I'm not here officially. I'm just listening.
Sounds good. Next I have, uh, Sheila Rorig.
Hi, this is Sheila Rorig. I live at six, seven, zero, zero Walnut Drive. I do live, um, on the, on the, uh, western cul-de-sac that is directly next to the development. So I also would be impacted by this greatly. I think everyone, everyone else that spoke prior to me brought up great points as well. Um, some of our main concerns, of course, are, is the traffic pattern through the neighborhood. There's a lot of young children in the neighborhood. We have limited, um, sidewalks in the neighborhood, so the kids ride their bikes on the road and kind of just, there's no through streets into South Saunders neighborhood. So the kids feel, you know, pretty safe driving around on their bikes and that type of thing. So my concern is the addition of Walnut Drive and South Saunders Drive going into this development, um, greatly impacting the volume of traffic through the neighborhood. Um, I think Jen Olson brought up a great point too about, about moving, um, the, uh, exit to this, to this neighborhood, um, the proposed neighborhood, moving it a little bit to the east. So it's not quite on that, um, sharp corner. So that's one of my concerns. Another concern is the denseness of the, um, proposed neighborhood. It's only 90 acres that's being developed and they're, they're planning for two, over 200, 203 homes or 220 homes. I've heard both of those numbers tonight. And I just feel that's very, very dense, densely populated for, again, what we all moved out here for. Um, the rural, preserving the rural landscape and, um, and respecting the natural resources and those types of things. So concerned about that as well. Shirley Hills, again, someone brought that up, is at capacity. That would be the, um, primary school that this neighborhood would feed into. So there's concerns about, um, schooling, the other infrastructure with the water, the sewer, all of that kind of things. I also have concerns about, um, the, there's, there's a lot of wildlife and there's a wetland area that's in that field that's very close to my home that is, is got standing water almost the entire year unless there's an actual drought. Um, so that wetland area feeds a lot of wildlife. And in the proposed neighborhood, it doesn't seem like they have any areas where they're going to put any parks within the neighborhood. And I, I realize that Jen Olson is, um, is, um, donating 45 acres of land, which I thank her for, for donating that to our community. I think that's, um, very generous of her and very much appreciated for this community. Those are most of the ones. I appreciate you listening. Thanks so much.
Thanks for your input.
Thank you. Um, next up I got a T Neverman.
Hi, this is Eric Neverman, sixty-seven, oh, five Walnut Drive. Um, directly across the street from Sheila who just spoke. So we're on the western extreme of the South Saunders neighborhood and would be significantly impacted by this as well. Um, I, you know, we share the exact same sentiments that have been mentioned. Uh, the schools, the water, the density of homes compared to what, you know, our existing community is. And, you know, if it were to come to it, obviously, as Ken had said, if we could get some kind of buffer between the South Saunders neighborhood and the new proposed development, um, would certainly be, uh, appreciated and supported. And again, as far as the traffic goes, you know, we are a very common household in this neighborhood. We've got two young kids and a couple of dogs and our kids are out in the street and we're walking, um, multiple times a day. And I think a through street with all the additional traffic that that would bring would be a significant safety concern for, for many of our families in this neighborhood. So, um, well, yeah, other than that, I, you know, agree with everything everyone else has said as far as concerned. So, thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Hey, hey Nick, this is, this is Shannon Bruce and I, I, I said I didn't want to speak, but I, I did want to make one point if I could.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Um, I've, I've heard a lot of concerns about density and traffic and connector roads. But one of the points that I wanted to bring up was the, the cash in lieu of land. that considering the, the 40 some acres that's being donated and I, I want to make sure that the planning commission carefully evaluates whether the city should ask for cash in lieu of land when I've heard a lot of people talking about preserving our rural character and wanting to preserve parks and open space. When this, you know, how this ends up, you know, when they, when, if and when they do a preliminary plat is anybody's guess. But I want to make sure that whatever we do and whatever the planning commission does and the city council does, that we encourage developers to include parks and open space. And I think when we ask for cash in lieu of land, that discourages that. And what the developers are going to do is they're going to take that open space and land and they're going to, they're, they're, they're going to put houses and they're going to make the, the development even denser than it is. So that's the only point I want to make is I strongly suggest that we consider not asking for cash in lieu of land here. I think there, there is a generous allocation of land. You know, the question of density and traffic and all those things need to be considered. But I, I think I'd like to see that land and open space and parks preserved in this development. Thanks.
So didn't the Parks Commission review this already?
They, they, they did and I, I attended that meeting as well and there were, um, you know, I there, there was a sense that they wanted to preserve, that, that the staff was recommending cash in lieu completely. And the Parks Commission decided not to do that. And then there were a couple of Parks Commissioners that actually said that they, they would prefer not to do any cash in lieu at all. But I think the ultimate recommendation was a hybrid without a specific percentage discussed. So it was sort of left up in the air. And ultimately it'll come before the council and the council can decide then what, what to do. But the, the council considers what the planning commission recommends too. So I, I just would like the planning commission to consider that.
I guess it's the, pre, or is, wouldn't it be considered what the Parks Commission does, Nick?
Oh yeah, I mean, that's the, the role of the Parks Commission is to, to look at the park dedication requirement. But I mean, that doesn't preclude you as the planning commission from, I guess, weighing in as well.
Okay, okay. Okay, who do we have next?
Uh, next I got Sarah Murray. Sarah, are you here? Do you wish to comment?
Um, no, I do not wish to comment.
All right. And then it looks like I've got one final person that called in on the phone a little bit late. I was unable to identify you. So if you called in later on in the meeting and haven't heard your name called yet, now is your chance to name an address, please.
Chris Carlson. I'm not sure if I'm on.
No, you were called in, but if you wish to comment, you go ahead.
Chris Carlson, 5950 West Branch. Talking about connecting the two communities, I understand the people in Saunders don't like the idea of traffic going through there. But I would think at a minimum, if the project goes forward, you should have a bike path, connect the neighborhood so kids can get back and forth without going onto 110 to accomplish it on bicycles or walking. Just a thought. I think Janet's great, the idea of preserving that 45 acres, donating it to Three Rivers Park District. My only thought is this new potential community might need green space of its own. The Three Rivers Park likes to close at a certain time of night. You can't guarantee what they're going to do with this land if they're going to say it's closed to the public after a certain hours. I just think the neighborhood should, should have some of its own green space. And would accomplish another thing that I like is less density. I spent a lot of time the last couple of months in Mound, talking to over 100 people about a high density project they were putting in. A lot of people from Minatrista stopped in and talked to us, people from Mound and Minatrista. And I've heard some of these comments tonight had a very common theme. We moved here for a reason. It's because it's a small, quiet community and they were moving away from the high density. So I would, if this project goes forward, I would recommend less density for multiple reasons. Another item, there's a lot of talk about internet. If you do build a new neighborhood, put fiber in the ground while you do it and then you just have to run a trunk line somewhere, connect everything. And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. And then, so I go back to, did anyone call in later on, wish to speak? Or is everyone that wishes to speak been given the opportunity?
Hearing no.
Hearing none, I think we're good.
Okay. Okay, so continuing on with this, you talked about two motions in this. Do we do both the motions at the same time? I still have some comments about if we've got to go over the site or the sketch plan. I still have comments on the sketch plan. I mean, do we still do that if we, or do we do the motion for the comp plan amendment?
Um, I think whenever you guys are ready, if you want to address your comments about the concept plan now and then do the motions one after another, that's fine. I don't see an issue either way unless Chris sees otherwise.
No, I don't. I, I think that would work. Just, you know, clearly, if you're going to combine them, make sure that it's clearly stated.
Well, we'd make two separate motions, right? But I make them one after the other versus one now and one later. Because I just have a few more comments on the sketch plan. And I don't know if anybody else does also.
I've got a comment on it too.
Pardon me?
This is Damian. I said I had a, had a comment on the sketch plan as well.
Okay, well, let me make my thoughts. Um, I also had a question whether this, they had a park there with a playground if they're going to have that many people. So I didn't see anything that specifically spoke to that. And I guess I didn't know what the Parks Commission had decided. And obviously the trails would be very important for this, this development. And then as, and I heard one of the people that spoke about not having sidewalks. There's another question is a recommendation of having at least sidewalks on one side of the street. We found that both sides is maybe too much, but boy, kids can bicycle on a sidewalk then.
Yeah, and that's included in the engineer's memo as well.
Yes, and, but I'm, I'm saying I'm agreeing with it, seeing what's happened in the past.
Sure.
And then, like in Red Oak, I want to make sure that we don't get into the same situation that we did at Red Oak where people couldn't even add a deck without a variance. I mean, I don't know what these houses are going to be like, but each one of these places better be able to have a nice little deck in their backyard and not be having to go to the city for a variance because the lots are too small. And I also was wondering, what is the square foot of a villa? What, what type is that? Would that mean? I guess that would be the developer maybe could answer that question.
Uh, this is Casey Walshiger again with Summer Gate.
Thank you.
Yeah, as far as the, the size of the units go, we have a project down on Lakeville that has the same exact size, lots 55 foot wide. And the homes in there range anywhere from 1,500 square feet all the way up to 4,000 square feet. It just depends on whether or not they add finished basements or if they decided to add a second floor or whatever. But the square footage is really just dependent on what kind of, you know, what, what, what the buyer is searching for.
Right. I, I guess my question is maybe what's the footprint more than maybe the square feet?
The, the footprint on something like that would be depending on what the side setbacks we would do. If they were five and five, that would leave you a 45 foot white house that would normally be 70 or 80 feet deep. Uh, and that would leave you 3,000 square feet just on one level, on the main level.
So is that the villas?
Yes.
Wow. And you would be able to fit a deck on the back of every one of those?
Yeah, the, the lots, the typical depth of the lot on these are 130 feet deep. So your, your house pad would be generally about 80 feet. And the home itself would probably be about 70 feet. So you end up having a 10 or 12 foot deck, you know, depending on what the home configuration is. Homes get quite large real fast, especially if you start adding basements or second, second floors. And, and, and Nick had mentioned it before, I mean, later on, as we, as we go through the preliminary plat, we can show you homestyle plans and things so you can look at and see what, what can be put inside that. But it's very common on, on, you know, these kind of plans to, of course, include some type of plan for a deck. And we can make sure that any plans that are brought forward, you can identify how a deck can be built on every plan.
That, that was a mess. So yes, that would be important.
If, if, let me ask, this is, is that consistent with a hardcover issue that Minatrista has?
That was just, that was just a setback issue. And that didn't, I mean, they still meant the hardcover, but it was a setback thing. But we have to watch hardcover too. So you're right about that. Um, okay, that was all my questions or thoughts on the, on the sketch plan. Did, Damian, you said you had some. I'll let other people ask questions and make their comments.
I, I, I just, I mean, what we've seen on the planning commission, five feet is really, really, that's really narrow. I guess on the sketch plan, I think, you know, just being in a similar community to Saunders, I, I think, I think one of the things I'd like to see is, 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 you know, leaning towards what Shannon had said about parks. And instead of driving through the cul-de-sac, maybe they put a park in between the two communities. I think it might have been Chris that had mentioned something about a bike path. But having a park right in between two communities, I think that speaks to, you know, how the children and the kids are going to, you know, enjoy and use that space as well. The density seems to me pretty, pretty high. I, I would want to, honestly, I'm going to be aggressive and say, I think they need to cut it in half. And the other thing about the sketch plan, I would want to know how altering that property, that development would affect the flood zone or flood, you know, where that water's going. Like if you raise the land in one part of, of, you know, those, that large parcel, you know, that water's got to go somewhere. Is, how's that going to affect the other community? And, you know, I'm just, I'm just concerned because I think one of the, one of the neighbors had talked about settling like standing water. You know, so, you know, that they're going to backfill that and that water's going to go somewhere. So I, I'd be concerned about that. And if we can, you know, probably get some more studies around that, the, the water displacement, that would be of, of concern with me when it comes to the sketch plan. But I'd like to see other options then just to go right through those cul-de-sacs. And, you know, going back to putting a park in between it, I think is, is probably a better, you know, option. So.
Hey, this is Casey, the developer. If I could just kind of answer, that was obviously from the, the people who live in Saunders, the existing Saunders Lake and your feedback. If, if you read the letters from the county, they're not going to allow the, kind of the entrance on the 110 that we proposed. That's kind of on the eastern entrance. If they don't allow that entrance, then literally, and that's part of the reason why they were stubbed there originally off to the, you know, to the Jen Olson's property. There, there'd be no way to access her property at all. It has to have an access somehow. I mean, we have to connect somehow.
But I guess what I was.
Well, you see, but.
If you go back. If you go back to the county with a lower density proposal, maybe they will be open to access on that. Uh, just a thought. But if, you know, they're, one of the reasons they.
Density. It's not the density. That's, that's where everybody's misunderstanding that the county has standards on, on where they have, how many feet they have between connections onto county roads. And it's 1,350 or 1,320 feet or whatever it is between one connection and the next connection. So if you look at the, the Passwood Drive that comes north and south out of the Saunders Lake, South Saunders Lake development onto 110, then you have to take 1,300 feet, which is all the way down to Cardinal Cove Drive. That's the next allowable access point. It's not about how many, it has nothing to do with density. And even, and even, you know, just speaking to density in general, the, the density in the project is one, you know, it's less than even the R1 zoning that, that the city has now, which would allow up to 300 units. And we're not proposing 300 units, of course. But I, I'm just saying that in general though, that, that when you have the road connections, the county gets to say, yeah, this is where we're going to allow road connections and then you just have to plan around them. And we, we still put one in here because we were trying to get, to do exactly what the neighbors to, you know, in Saunders Lake are saying. We're trying to create paths to drive traffic away from their neighborhood. And that's why, you know, the, the two stub streets that we show going into there, if the county allowed that connection right there on that, kind of that southeast corner, we would need those connections there. We, we don't have any driveways on that road. There's no change for us. We, that could, those two connections could go away. If, you know, the, the county would allow that connection. But very seldom, and I, I've only, I can't speak for every development that's ever happened, but very seldom do they just veer away and allow people to develop extra connections. You can see even when you, if you were to use like Google Maps or something and kind of look at with that South Saunders Lakes development, you know, they have two connections kind of coming from their development down to 2110. Uh, and obviously based on when it was done. And, you know, I'm just saying counties are a lot more strict than they used to be. They used to kind of just allow everybody to do whatever they wanted. And, you know, as the roads are kind of, now they're very, very strict. So if they allow it, we have no problem not making any connections. That's not a desire on our part. That's more of a desire because we have to have a way to access the property, you know.
Yeah, my comment about density was really, you know, speaking to the overflow on schools, the road traffic and then our significant issue in Minatrista with water. Also, you know, fire safety, you know, we're spread pretty thin. I don't know if you're aware, but essentially we contract with St. Bonnie and Mound for fire. I mean, and, and when they closed 144, I mean, we literally had a, we had a fire truck on standby just, just to be able to, because they couldn't go through. I mean, it's, it's just, I just don't see how from a, from a plan, if you're putting 200 plus homes in such a small area, how it doesn't stretch and break a fragile, you know, infrastructure that we have. And it's really, really fragile. And I don't know that you get that as developer because you want to go in and, you know, we understand that you want to go in and make as much money as you can, but we're just, we're just, you know, giving you feedback because we live here. And, and that's, you know, that's, that's what we see and so on and so forth. So, you know, that's, 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 that's what I was commenting about, about, you know, with the, with the plan as far as, you know. So I, I don't know what that would look like for you guys. Maybe it's not feasible. I, I'm not sure. But maybe you can find a middle ground where you, you know, find homes that are closer to Saunders and I, I don't know. So.
Well, I mean, one thing, but one thing we didn't, we didn't bring up during this process is that this plan out of the 90 acres does propose almost 18 acres of the 90 acres as either open space or parks. So I, it, it wasn't just the other 45 acres that Jen Olson was, you know, looking at donating. That's outside of the project. You know, inside the project still has.
That doesn't play in here. I'm going to jump in it because I've been waiting because I, I agree with Damian. There's way too many houses here. I've been waiting, because I, I agree with Damian, there's way too many houses here for the pressures of all sorts that can be put on Minutrista as a community, number one, and I think that that needs to be resolved. Number two, I think as, as a planning in a city, we owe the people of South Saunders the same sort of safety that they had when they bought these houses, and brought their families here, and have their children playing in the streets, there's no sidewalks in there, there's no place for those kids to go, to think that, that, that you wanna run all that traffic through there, just makes no sense, and, and you either, in, in my opinion, you either need to find a way to, to do that, or I'd have a hard time justifying passing anything on that, let alone wanting to move the Musa line out, to go into a comp plan change, and I think all those issues need to be addressed before we even think about a, a, a comp plan change.
Or at least answer some of the questions about a road study, or speaking to the school district, or speaking to fire safety more in depth, or talking to the internet providers to see what you can do about internet provision in there, or talking to, getting more specifics on water, and what the pressure is gonna be on the school, on, on the community, and, you know, maybe dedicating specific water, you know, land donation to the city, so that way we can possibly build just in case, or something, I, I don't know, just be a little bit more comprehensive on the plan, you know, going forward, if you want us to make the change to the comprehensive plan, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, just because, you know, again, it's, we, we've been dealing with these problems outside of, you know, this community, and we just wanna make sure that we're addressing it, not adding on and compounding to the problems that we already have.
Okay, thanks, Peter, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I did, yeah, I kind of feel that we have, since we already have the twenty forty plan approved, and, and we have budgeted the area around Highway seven, to, to have, you know, much higher density, it, it does seem like, you know, we should, we don't need this incredible density here, and, and I think it, as these neighbors pointed out, we wouldn't be true to our mission if we, we allowed it, so I, yeah, I'd like to see a real scale back of the project.
Anybody else?
I agree with, this is Bob Raven, I agree with what was just said, I think that the idea is good, I just think it's too big, and, you know, if, if it was more in line with the lot sizes of the Saunders Lake community, maybe that would help them out, also, because, you know, if we're talking about ninety acres, of which I think you said eighteen of it is non-developed land, right, because it's parks or whatever it would be, so now you're reducing that to seventy-two, and putting two hundred homes on it, so what, you know, if we're at half acre lots, you could put a hundred and forty homes on there roughly, and that would be probably a little bit more in line with the Saunders Lake community.
Thanks, anybody else?
Yeah, this is Steve, I, Steve Lovemore, I would agree with what you said, I, I think that, and I live over here in Total Creek, where, you know, we're a hundred homes, and we only have one road access in and out, and it's not horrible, but at times it does get a little tight, and so having two hundred homes put into that size of a, of a space with, with the limit I know that one-ten is, right, just, just traversing it personally, it just seems like it, it would put a, a stretch on that, on that road, and, and certainly would need to have some additional information available in order for us to decide if that's actually sustainable for the, for that community, for that space.
Anybody else?
Gary Vars, just an overview kind of comment, I think this development looks great on paper, but I pretty much support all the comments about infrastructure, and I also have to go back to the city of Minutrista's missed, mission statement, and this, this obviously does not fit our mission statement, can it be made in a way that it could fit the mission statement? Possibly, I don't see how it can be done, but this, this does not fit my view of what Minutrista is trying to be, and what the citizens of Minutrista want it to be, end of comment.
Okay, thanks, any other comments from the commission? Oh, are we ready to discuss, I guess we have to do some motions, two motions, the first motion would be about the comp plan, let me look this up, the comp plan. Possible amendment request, are we interested in doing that for this? Do I have a motion? This is just an advisory to the council.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, this is Gary Pettis, I'll make a motion that we not look at extending, and making a change to the comp plan at this time.
Okay, do I have a second?
Well, there's just too many questions, you, you know, I, I think that we need answers to all the questions that we put out, you, you know, we need to, we need to have engineering studies done on water, and power, and storm sewer, traffic, schools.
You want that as...
I, I do want that part of, part of, part of it, that, you know, that, that, part of the motion, and if they're willing to do that, and resubmit it with that evidence of, of, of evidence that it's not going to cause problems, then I'd be willing to look at reopening, you know, at moving the, changing, to making a change to the comp plan.
So Nick and Chris, does that work for the motion?
If it gets a second, yeah.
I would have to say...
Go ahead, Chris.
I was just gonna say, I, that, that's a very hard motion, I'd have to have, somebody would have to reiterate it, and Gary Pettis made the motion, we'd have to have a second on it, and then I would like a cleanup of what you guys are looking for, before, um...
Sure, that makes sense.
Could we repeat the motion?
Yeah, let's, let's repeat the motion for Chris, yes, you wanna repeat that, Gary?
Yeah, I, I make a motion that we do not look at extending, yes.
Okay, a motion, okay, so, your motion should say, motion to recommend to the council of not changing the comp plan, or something like that, don't, that's kind of what we're looking for.
Well, I guess, this isn't necessarily a, a recommendation to the council per se, I mean, you're, you're providing the applicant with feedback, so direct your comments to the applicant, more so than the city council, the city council will obviously get a summary of what it is you guys discussed, and what recommendations you made, but this is non-binding feedback to the applicant, it's meant to give them a sense of what... Well, it can be captured in a motion, but I mean, you're, you're directing the applicant on a future application submitted, is ultimately what you're doing, basically, it'll go to the council, the council will get to look at it with a different lens, and provide comment to the applicant, but that'll all be essentially here, you know, if you wanna proceed forward, here's our expectations of this development, so if you've got concerns over density, or, you know, utilities, or, or things of the like, and you want that researched, you certainly can, you know, direct the applicant, you know, in that manner, obviously, you know, you're not acting on a comprehensive plan amendment itself this evening, you know, that would go back through the process, so there would be time for the applicant to gather the data you need, to make an informed decision on the request that they would be pursuing, so you don't necessarily need to say, you know, no, because we don't have all the information, you would say no, because you, whatever your reasoning is behind saying, hey, we're generally not gonna support it, but maybe you'd say, hey, you know, we'd be willing to consider it, if this information is provided to us, and it comes forward in a, a positive manner, I guess, in terms of what's being proposed.
I thought that's what Gary was suggesting, that we're not supporting it.
Let, let's see, let's see if we can clean it up.
Okay.
All right, I, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we not move forward on extending the Musa line, and by direction to the builder, or, and landowners, is that they need supporting information that this will not put a strain on the water, and the power, and this existing water, power, and storm systems that are in place under the present comp plan with the addition of this property, also, a study on the traffic on one-ten, on the school systems, and on the fire and police systems, that, that support our community. I'd also give them direction that I wanna see something different than traffic going through Saunders Lake South, I like the idea of a park.
Well, do we wanna split that part?
Yeah, I mean, let's focus more, yeah, on the comp plan itself, and then obviously there'll be a second motion that'll focus more on layout, you know, parks.
Okay, well, I'll take the park out of there, but I, I'd like to see, again, for them, I'd like to see a traffic not go through South Saunders, and I'd also like to see the amount of units in the development reduced drastically, that's it.
Does everybody understand what we're voting on?
Madam Chair?
Really?
Madam Chair?
Are you gonna read us, cleaned up?
Yeah, and then, yep, and then it would require a second, okay, so Gary Pettis motioned that the city not move forward with extending the Musa line, direction to the developer to get supporting documentation regarding water, power, storm sewer, I would also presume that you'd want cable, or some type of thing in there, that wasn't mentioned. Okay, engineering study, a traffic study, and a study of the school system, and also how it would affect the police and fire, he'd like, also would like to see, or the city would like to see, traffic not go through Saunders, and then also a drastic decrease of units.
I'd just say a decrease of units.
Okay, well, I'm just, whatever he said, I was just repeating, so a decrease of units.
I'm okay with adding it to a decrease of units.
Okay.
Okay, decreased number of units, um, so, I guess you do have to get a second for this, and then we can, you can vote on it, or if it's...
Let me ask Gary, does that meet what you wanted as a motion?
I believe it does, yes.
Okay, so then we need a second. Anybody?
So, my only issue with what, how this is kind of being laid out, is that, I think what we, what I would wanna do to be able to second, and then maybe other commissioners could, could, could comment, what was that, instead of saying we're not recommending the, I would say something about, you know, we, you know, we would propose...
In order to move forward?
Yeah, in order to move forward, or something like that, because I, I just, you know, I think, I just, I, I think if, if, if they were to meet all those, and get, you know, positive public comment with the neighbors, and stuff like that, I think then, you know, you know, met those conditions, we would, you know, be in more line to wanna support that change to comprehensive plan, is, is something that I'm looking for, but not so much, you know, I said, if, or maybe making that more like, our recommendation is, something like that.
Chris, did you doctor something up, and then get Gary to okay it, or does he have to...
So, I mean, we can keep the, you know, needing the supporting documentation, but more of a motion to consider the concept slash site plan, motion in order to consider it, recommendations to the developer would be needing supporting documentation, blah, blah, blah.
I would be okay with something that wraps, I, if something that wraps it that way, I would be okay with that.
Okay, so Gary's okay, so it's still Gary's motion, correct?
And if he made that change, I'll second that.
Okay, so Gary has that motion, do I have a second with that change in verbiage?
Damian, did I hear you said you would second that?
Damian, yeah, I said I would second that with the changes that, that, for the recommendation.
Okay, um, Madam Chair, would you like me to do the roll call for you, or...
Right, but before I answer, when, when I say...
Oh, we need, we need comments.
Well, no...
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I can't remember how the motion was said, whether I should say yes or no, read me the first line again.
It would say, motion, okay, motion to recommend, and wait, motion to...
Consider.
Wait, I gotta think about this, motion, because I, it's not motion to, it would be, Gary, motion, in order to move forward, or, I lost my train of thought on this, sorry, motion.
I thought it was something to the fact of this body's recommendation to the developer and landowner would be to X, Y, and Z, you know, again, all the, all things about water, road, schools, fire safety, flood, density, you know, all that, to make those, those, you know, inquiries, or, you know...
I think we want studies.
Right.
I, I think we want hard information, I think we want, I, I, I think we need the studies completed.
Motion from the planning commission to consider, to consider a revised concept plan, they recommend supporting documentation regarding engineering study, traffic study, and all those things that we had mentioned before, does that sound better?
Well, Madam Chair, for a second, I'd like...
Yeah, that, that's, as long, yes, I'm okay with that, because I believe that that's asking for the engineering studies, and the other information from the fire and everything with that, and, and so I'm okay with that.
Okay, Damian, do you, I know, but Damian has to second that first.
Well, Peter was making a...
Peter.
Okay, thank you, you know, it strikes me that, that Gary has everything in here, so if, you know, if we just have the first part of, say, we make motion not to extend the Musa line, that would be one, or change the comp plan, that would be the first motion, and then the second motion would be all the concerns that Gary has raised, it seems like those two would encapsulate what we're trying to do, I don't know if that makes any sense to anybody else, but... I don't know if that makes any sense to anybody else, but.
Well, I kind of liked it together that we wouldn't consider a Musa line extension without all that information. I mean, at this time, I don't feel like we have enough information to make a good decision.
Okay.
Anybody else? Damian? And then we're going to have another motion, though, about the, the sketch plan.
The site plan, yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree, I agree with what Laura just said, I'd like to see them, I'd like to give direction to the developer in what we would need to see to have this body recommend to them or the council, to whomever. So, um, to move forward.
Okay. So
Okay, I need
Gary, we, we can hear you.
Okay, I can hear you now again, but I lost everybody, I'm, I'm back.
Okay, okay, let's go down. Go ahead.
Okay, well, first Damian has to Damian needs to, um, okay, Damian needs to, um, amend his, you know, that he will accept those changes. Because Gary already said he has a friendly, he will take the friendly amendment, now Damian needs to second that.
I'll second that.
Okay, now, if you have any further discussion on that, now's the time.
No, I
One comment, I, this is Gary Vars. I want to make sure that we get the information to basically start over again considering this, I don't want this to be written and voted on like if they do the stuff that we're talking about, that will, that, that it's a, it's a done deal. So, and it may be that way already.
This is the motion.
I just want to have a caution in here that we aren't, we aren't setting ourselves up or the developer up for unhappiness, okay?
Okay.
What I'm hearing is that
Commissioner Vars, the motion is, motion from the planning commission to, to consider a comp plan amendment. The planning commission recommends to the developer, um, to, that they would need supporting documentation and then list all the things that they would like to see. So, basically, or what this motion is saying is that in order for the planning commission to reconsider a comp plan amendment, these things need to be taken care of, so there is no guarantee that, that, that's going to take place.
And I want to interrupt you real quick.
Nick?
Yes, this is, this is, by no means is the, is the planning commission making any decision this evening. You are providing the applicant with non-binding feedback as to what they proposed and the process they would need to follow. So to direct them to gather more information, have studies performed, et cetera, would all come back when they make an application for the comprehensive plan amendment, which has to go back through the planning commission and the city council. It's a separate deal, so you would obviously see this item again with the supporting documents that you are recommending in order to consider that request, at that time, you would then be making a decision. This evening, you're not making a decision, you're simply providing the applicant with non-binding feedback on how they should continue to pursue the sketch plan as they presented it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So my, I just have one comment. The reason that this is so hard to decide on is this wasn't part of the comp plan, I mean, we would probably have all that engineering and information looked at in the comp plan. So, okay, so now we're going to vote, right? Is there any other discussion? Okay, we're, we'll do the roll call, Chris.
Okay, uh, Chair Laura Sandholm?
I'm going to say yes, that I agree with the, uh, motion.
Okay, Peter Vickery?
Yes.
Um, Damian Young?
Yes.
Gary Vars?
Yes.
Bob Raybine?
Yes.
Steve Livermore?
Yes.
And Gary Pettis?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. So, this next type of motion is per the sketch plan. How detailed does this have to be, really? Hasn't the applicant heard all of our comments? Or do we need to list them out and then all agree with them? Is that what we need to do?
I, I can tell you as the applicant, I, I definitely heard the comments. And, uh, you, you don't, you don't need to create a thirty-five page list, that's for sure, for me. I think I have a good understanding of what you guys are looking for.
That's what I feel like, but, okay, officially, Chris and Nick, do we need a motion?
I technically don't think so, I mean, I guess the, the idea of the motion was to summarize any and all comments um, for the applicant on what to, to consider when they, um, and as they move forward with the process. So I guess if the, if the applicant feels that, um, the, you know, the comments and the concerns and such have been heard to their satisfaction, I, I'd be okay, uh, with, without a motion. I guess it, you know, it'd be nice, you know, for your, your city council to get a, a summary in some manner, we'll have to figure out how to do that as to what the items that were discussed by the planning commission.
Um, Nick, can I make a suggestion?
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, I would suggest making a motion anyway, um, and just maybe, um, making a motion, um, to, you know, accept the, um, items discussed or to approve the items discussed at the, at the meeting. Um, and then we, Nick and I, you, we can go over and, you know, because some of the concerns were the sidewalks and, and the, you know, different things like that. So we could put a, a small synopsis together for the council. But I, I think you should at least have some type of a motion. That just makes it cleaner.
Just so that we're, we know what we're going to vote on, could we just go ahead and try to, like, summarize what that list is? Um, I mean, if Laura
Well, let's, let's hit the big ones.
Yeah, the big ones.
The big ones?
I want to know what we're voting on, from a, from a recommendation for the site.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I mean, we have things as vague as, you know, we want to see trails. Would that be one?
From what I heard, can I just kind of go over what I heard and if I missed something? Um, I heard decrease density.
Okay.
Um, you know, try to re-entry points, I guess, or, uh,
I, I, I also, um, if you can put in the, the park, um, as a buffer, um, and maybe a little bit more, um, green space.
Well, I don't know if you need, I, I don't know if you need to put park as a buffer, I think if you just put parks slash green space, the developer has heard all of this, so, I, I don't know.
And are we saying then it's not going to be connected with the, with, um, with the other development?
Well, is that what you're recommending?
Is that what, that's the one probably big point.
That's the one thing I heard, I, I saw that that was, um, if we, if we didn't have to connect it and maybe we, we had like a, a trail or some type of park where they can, you know, walk or connect through that way, that was what I, I was wanting to support.
But essentially not connected by roads.
Correct.
Okay.
But, this is Steve Livermore, I don't know if that takes the development off the, off the, out of the possibility then, though, right?
It's just a, it's just a guidance, I mean, we don't know, so, it's just a guidance, we're not telling them how to, how to do the site, we're just saying, hey, we'd like to see something better, you know, so, you know, they're going to have to figure it out.
Yeah, gotcha, okay, yeah.
They might come up with a fabulous plan.
There you go, that'd be awesome.
Yep, okay, so I heard decrease density, um, I guess it'd be access point to County Road 110, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, no connecting roads with Saunders. A park buffer slash green space. I have sidewalks and trails. Does that, well, sum it up, and I mean, I know there's some other smaller things that was mentioned, but
You know, at least the, you know, our, our ordinance says at least four different models, you know, more would be great.
And the comment about what Laura made, I mean, we've seen how many times where a, uh, resident comes back and they want to add, you know, this is Minnesota, they want to, they want to add a deck, we want to make sure that, um, their lots can support a deck. Um, so that way we're not having to approve something like that, I thought that was really important.
Okay, I got that, building path to support potential deck, how about that?
Yeah, and a decent sized deck, not a six-foot deck.
Well, I think that is something that, um, would be addressed at that next section, but
Yep.
Is there any other, we have two, three, four, five, six items? Um, do you want to add more, or do you think that's a good start for the developer? Nick, any? Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fine.
Okay, okay. Do you want to read that to us again, Chris?
Sure, so this is
And then somebody can make that motion for what you read.
Okay, and this is for the site plan, correct, the sketch plan?
Yes, this is the sketch plan.
Okay, um, motion, I'm sorry, I don't have my computer at home today, so it's, I left it at work, so I'm going to be back there first thing in the morning, so, um,
Chris, one, one second, I apologize, um, from a site plan perspective, um, one of the things I, I, I'm, I'm very critical of is, um, a, a comment by a neighbor about water, uh, standing water visible on the property, um, you know, just in, depending on Yeah, well
Are you referring to drainage?
Right, drainage, so, um, I would recommend that the, from a site perspective, that, um, the developer consult or, you know, take in consideration what the drainage flow is coming from the other development. Because if we have two developments doing two different things, we could have, you know, a big problem. And I don't know if that, that's actually considered at that point, but, you know, where we put those retention ponds or how that flows, I just want them to kind of consider that, I, I don't know how, that, when, when, when a neighbor recommended like, or said something about, you know, there's a lot of standing water most of the time, that, that was a, that's a pretty big red flag to me.
But that was
Just FYI, I'm pretty sure they live next to a wetland.
Yeah. And the wetlands are going to be delineated, right?
They've, they're, they're in the process of doing that, if not been completed, um, so, that, that work has, has been started, like you said, if not completed.
Okay, well, I mean, if it doesn't affect it, then I apologize, the way I, the way that they made it sound, it sounded like they were on the cul-de-sac, they're at the cul-de-sac or near the cul-de-sac that was going to, um, you know, where they're proposing a road, and I, I wasn't sure where that neighbor lives, so, um,
I guess I'm just, yeah, speculating based on, you know, I think they had a walnut address, and if you look kind of in the northeast corner of the development, there is a little area marked as, you know, delineated wetland, I'm speculating that that's maybe what they're talking about, I mean, there are wetlands that do hold water, so, um,
Yeah, that, that is what they're talking about.
It's, that is a delineated wetland, it was approved by the watershed and everybody's already kind of accepted the wetland.
Got it, thank you.
Okay.
So, should I take that drain, should I take drainage off of that?
Um, I don't think you should do, take the drainage off of that, this is Jeanette, I live across from Sheila. Yes, there is a pond behind their house, but the corner of that field is always underwater, especially this last year. But I'm, that, that's just my two cents worth, sorry.
Okay, well, let's leave the drainage in, that can't hurt, that it has to be considered, because they have to put those retention ponds, et cetera, there's a lot of rules on that from the, from the county or the state, I don't know which, but, okay. Leave that in.
Um, okay, so I have motion to give direction to the developer regarding sketch plan. And, um, I have decreased density, access point to County Road 110, not connecting with Saunders, um, green space slash park buffer, um, between neighborhoods. Uh, sidewalks slash trails. Um, building path to support potential deck, and then drainage. That's all I have, so unless you want me to add something else.
Only thing I had was whether there'd be a little playground somewhere.
Well, that, that would be the park buffer, that would be included in that.
Okay. Okay, so, that would be a good motion, does somebody want to, um, make that motion? Unless there's more discussion on that.
Sure, this is Steve Livermore, I'll make the motion to, um, make those recommendations to the applicant, uh, based on the bullet points that Chris just mentioned.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second it, Gary Vars.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we're ready for a roll call, I take.
Okay, Chair Laura Sandholm?
Um, yes.
Peter Vickery?
Yes.
Gary Vars?
Yes.
Bob Raybine?
Yes.
Steve Livermore?
Yes.
Damian Young?
Yes.
Gary Pettis?
Yes.
Okay, that motion also passes seven zero.
Okay, that takes care of that one business item, right? Is there any other questions? Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming and hearing that. Um, feel free to keep listening, we have a few more items left on our agenda that includes the staff reports and the council reports. So anything from you, Nick?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, um, I'll fill you in on a couple items here. Um, I'll start with kind of what to expect for next, uh, month's planning commission meeting. Um, we do have, I believe, four possible applications, a couple are variances. Um, one is a, uh, two lot split, and the other is a, an interim use permit amendment. Um, so there will be a meeting, um, scheduled for November the twenty-third, um, with those, um, possible items on your agenda. Um, and then I just wanted to, I guess, fill the planning commission in on an item they reviewed at their September meeting. Um, that site plan for solar off of County Road ninety-two and West Highland. Um, that went before the city council on October nineteenth. Um, at that meeting, um, they directed staff to bring back a resolution denying the site plan. Um, and also installing a one-year moratorium to give them time to review the, um, the ordinance and, um, you know, reconsider any of the language there. Um, I think Pam can maybe chime in a little bit, you know, being that she was at the meeting, I personally was not in attendance.
Sure. Do you want me to go with my council updates now?
I'm good with it, yeah, if you want to add on to my last little point, give us some firsthand, um, recap, and then, um, whatever other updates you have to add.
Yep, I just have a, a few things, um, the, regarding the site plan review for the ground-mounted solar energy system that Nick was talking about. Um, I know that the planning committee, you guys spent a lot on discussing this issue. Um, and prior to the city council meeting on ten nineteen, there were many, many emails the city council meeting on ten nineteen, there were many, many emails and phone calls received expressing opposition from residents near the location and throughout the city regarding the solar farm site. Um, prior to the meeting, uh, Mayor Wayland had discussions with our legal advisor and staff to determine the city options and different ideas to present to the council. So what's determined, uh, that screening that large of an area does not meet the standards or the requirements of the city code, along with a few of the, there was a few other concerns also that did not meet the requirements to the city code. So the city council directed staff to come back with the resolution, including the findings of fact, to deny the application for a plan review. And then we also directed staff to come back, like Nick said, with an ordinance imposing a one-year moratorium for solar, uh, gardens in the agricultural, uh, preserved zoning district. So, yes, it was, uh, I think the residents were pleased with, um, the results of the meeting, and, um, yes, I think overall it went very well. So we'll bring that back. Um, the CARES Fund Act, just to give you a quick update on that, uh, as you know, the CARES Act provides assistance for state, local, and tribunal, or tribe, tribal government to cover costs, uh, arisen from the COVID pandemic. Uh, the city administration has provided five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars in CARES funding to allocate in accordance with the Department of Treasury Office's. Uh, the city council approved the allocation of CARES fund at the October nineteenth meeting with the following amounts. Uh, the reimbursement of the eligible city expenses were estimated to be close to thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the nonprofit assistance expenses, uh, there were two organizations that were looking at, uh, giving them twenty thousand dollars a piece, so it'd be a total of forty thousand dollars. But they do need to fill out a form, uh, with how they are going to, uh, spend that money before that's approved. Uh, and the rest of the amount, which is close to five hundred thousand dollars, uh, will be eligible for public safety expenses. Uh, the water tower updates. Uh, the, uh, water tower on Sunny Field, the maintenance project going on there in the northeast corner of the city is scheduled to be completed and back in service on November sixth, and the new tower being constructed on the southwest corner of, uh, of the city by Con- Hunter's Crest is, uh, on schedule and on budget. Uh, the road projects and maintenance continues to be a high priority going into twenty twenty-one, as it was for twenty twenty. Uh, Mayor Wayland, um, worked really, really hard with staff, uh, and reapplied for the reimbursement, uh, for state aid funds, which came to the amount of nine hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So the following roads are scheduled for twenty twenty-one, uh, and that is Hardscrabble Circle, Hardscrabble Drive North, Loring Drive, Stonebridge Road, Minneapolis Avenue, and Sunny Field. And this will include reclamation and repaving, uh, stormwater drainage enhancements, uh, minor repairs to the water main and sanitary sewer systems, uh, replacement of the sanitary forest main along Hardscrabble Road North. And the last thing is our budgets, uh, for twenty twenty-one are wrapping up, and they'll be finalized in December seventh. Lots going on.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions while Pam's talking to us?
Pam, you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. It's been a lot of work, but, you know, it, it is fun, but it is a lot of work. And, you know, I just wanted to compliment all of you guys, too. Um, the notes that you guys provide for the city council, they are well-read, and it really helps the council make some very sound decisions, and we do appreciate all your time and effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it? Any other, uh, things? That's it? Okay, we come to the last item on the agenda, which is-
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yes, Steve?
Yeah, Steve Livermore, yeah. Hey, Nick, in the future, is there any way you could do a screen share so we could kinda see some of this material as we go through it? I, it's very difficult on my end to kinda visualize everything that we're discussing, and I think it might move things along a little quicker if that would be possible.
I can look into that. I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm learning go-to meetings as well as you guys are, so I'd have to, to learn the capabilities of that. Um-
Just a request, thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Anything else? Okay, um, I need a motion for adjournment, then.
This is Peter Vickery, all the way to adjourn.
Peter has made a motion to adjourn. Who do I have for a second?
I'll second it. This is Steve.
Okay, Steve seconded it. Okay, I suppose we have to go through the list.
Yes, Madam Chair, would you like me to do that for you?
Sure.
Okay. Um, Chair Laura, Laura Sandholm?
Yes.
Peter Vickery?
Yes.
Damian Young?
Yes.
Gary Vars?
Yes.
Robert Raybine?
Yes.
Steve Livermore?
Yes.
And Gary Pettis?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes seven.
Seven zero, and we are adjourned. Everybody, thank you. Thank you for your input.